Alright, so it is six oh one, we will call this meeting for the Mont Vernon School Board to order. Um, we will start off with a public input time, one of two. And this evening, we do not have any members of the public with us. Um, for anyone who is watching the recording, please know that we welcome you to join us. Excuse me. Now, we will have a second public input time a little bit later on the agenda. We can go ahead and move straight into the consent agenda. Um, we've got six items on our consent agenda this evening. I will leave it up to the board. Would you like to discuss anything on the consent agenda or?
I was. Yeah, I was good with everything on the. Me too.
Okay, you want a second?
And I will second that.
Okay, all in favor? Great. Um. Principal Equator, would you like to um say anything about your highlights from the principal's report?
Sure, I'd love to. Uh, Mr. Chamberlain asked me to um spend at least a couple hours on this.
Yeah.
I'll make some points, thank you uh um down here. Um, we got a fantastic opening, uh great three days, uh just a really nice vibe. Uh, you know, not to say COVID is over, it's not, but um there's just a a vibe of sort of normalcy here. Um, which is, which is really refreshing for staff, refreshing for for kids. Um, we had a great in-service day last Thursday with staff and um and Monday, uh great opening at the S A U and then um the building and um, you know, it's always a scramble, those last uh those last hours of the of the day before the students. And uh we had the ground running and it's been it's been just a really positive three days. Uh, of course, we're soaring here. Um. I made some videos, we we did a lot of training over the summer on responsive classroom, uh culture, climate, building community uh in our classrooms in our school, and really, we are responsive schools, not just classrooms. Um, it's the vibe throughout our our hallways and um everything we do, so um the sore theme pervades throughout, um made some videos of uh source of modeling for the hallways, the playground, uh the lunchroom, uh even for parents' car line, oh car line works, um has some positive feedback on that. Uh, I'm really excited about what happened over the summer here. Um, there was professional development and I and I was looking, you know, we we talked about our goals for the year at our meeting. Um, and the the thirty thousand views literacy math uh and S E L. And over the summer, the training uh that our teachers had, the professional development was on literacy, math, S E L, so just very much aligned, just feeling we're in a really good lane uh with all of that. And uh just really happy with the turnout of staff at all of those professional development opportunities this summer. We had every single math teacher or math training. We had uh all of our writing teachers and our literacy teachers at our uh writing day, professional development day, which was really organic to what um we felt our needs were here at the at the school. And um and then the responsive classroom training earlier in the summer uh was very well attended by by our staff. So um really good vibe, great having the kids in the hallways and uh you know, kids going down our slides and on the swings and it's kind of quiet and lonely here in the summer, so it's been it's been great. Um. Did you want to update on specials? Is this a good time to do that right now?
Sure.
So I just.
Yeah.
Wanted wanted to do a quick follow-up on that. We talked about that at our last meeting, so unfortunately, we're unable to fill that Spanish position um with the board's uh permission. We moved forward uh developing a plan with our with our specials. And in the end, we increased time for our art teacher and our music teacher. Um, in turn, what that did was we now have uh art for students two days a week. The best analogy I can come up with is if you imagine humanities, okay? So the way we do humanities and STEM here, humanities covers reading, it covers writing, it covers social studies, that's our humanities curriculum. Um, within that, we divide out like percentage of reading time and writing time and social studies time. But it's very fluid over the course of uh of a day. So like, for example, if a student is is doing a writing project, they're gonna per by percentage that day, probably spend more time on writing than they are maybe on reading. The next uh the next week, they might be doing more of a focus on reading, less focus on writing. So it really depends on uh in the humanities what they're doing. Likewise, for art, um we have our traditional art curriculum. Now we have uh what we're calling in-integrated arts, we're calling integrated arts, which integrates the content, um what the content teachers are teaching in their curriculum, trying to bridge, doing some interdisciplinary with the art class, and then also a steam flare to it, so um. There's so much digital art out there now, so bringing in um some of those digital art skills that are so important, graphic arts and and uh even some coding and robotics into that and how the arts can be integrated into that. So uh really excited, um Chrissy, our uh Chrissy Devler, our our teacher, um is is very creative, um has a wide range of skills uh from art to steam to actually uh a little bit of Spanish. Um, she's exploring some options for our students, co-curricular options uh for Spanish uh with our P T A, actually with some parents. Um, so I'm hopeful to report on that, give you an update at our next meeting um and where we are with that, but I'm optimistic that I'll be able to bring you um a co-curricular option for Spanish uh by October. Um, and that's literally the worst bit of meeting with Christie today. We had a lot of ideas, in the meantime, I have some parents that are interested in teething up, so um that's exciting. Uh, and then on the music side, uh we have music every week like we have, and then every other week, the students will have a second music. Um, and that will be an instrumental focus um to that. And so uh Jackie, our art, our music teacher, um she comes with a wide range of talents and skills uh from voice to instruments. And so um not only will she be able to do that in her class, we also uh in talking to Jackie, Christie and um Christina, actually in the sixth grade, they're planning a big musical this year where they want to bring all this sort of together and a co-curricular option as well. Hopefully, I'll have that by October to bring to you. Um, so Jackie just brings a lot of different skills that we'll be able to use uh through the specials. So um, I know it's not, you know, it's not the dream with Spanish, but it certainly for the the challenges that we're facing, given the timeframe and and so forth. Uh, I think we have it up in a really good place for kids. I think that uh the program is is going to be exciting for for kids. I think the staff uh is the right the right staff for uh the program and um so move forward. So that's that's the update from where we left off last last meeting with that. See, was there anything else on that?
Um, really just with each of them, we didn't want just more art and more music while we think students would really enjoy that. We wanted to really make sure it was an enhanced experience and really almost an enrichment opportunity for students because um we do recognize losing Spanish, that that is a significant loss. We really wanted to make sure that we were um, you know, providing them with an experience that was different than what they were already receiving. So just the integrated art, really having that STEM and technology focus and music really bringing in the instrumental piece, which often there's not time for. Um, so we're excited that we're um really providing opportunities to students haven't gotten in the same way before. Um, while we're, you know, certainly disappointed about the Spanish piece, we we think it's um making the the best that we can with what we have, and we're thrilled that our staff was, you know, willing to jump in and help out and add days and come up with these programs.
I mean, I think it's a great creative solution.
Thank you.
Uh, and I'm really happy that everyone was able to step up and step into those roles. It sounds like a really great setup. Um, I wonder, were you able to find some resources to provide to parents so that students can have some continuing Spanish exposure maybe at home or how does that go?
Yeah, we've been working with Christie on that, and it was a little bit of a rush uh to the start of our school year. So we've continued conversations with her. We wanted to be able to provide families with information all at once. Um, so one option will be, you know, uh, parents can choose to go on V-Lax. So we'll kind of share some of those options that families might choose to explore. Um, the other option would be kind of a a joint um effort where students might sign up for V-Lax, but one day a week, they might come to a Spanish club, for example, which we're still trying to firm up. How like how often and what that might look like, where they could um kind of work on their V-Lax, but also receive other experiences for Spanish. So we're kind of still firming that up. Um, Christie was really excited about both opportunities, but the art piece really took a front seat. Um, you know, throughout August and get that off the ground. Um, so she said, I'm ready to transition and start working on Spanish, so we haven't fully fleshed that out. Um, and she does also have a contact, someone that she's worked with in the past, that might even be able to provide some additional enrichment opportunities here as well, so we're looking into both of those.
And how about any parent feedback?
We we have, so I have not had any um any concerns or any anything at this point. I've heard uh more student feedback, actually, that they're, you know, excited for the new the new program, the new class. Um, there's been a lot of energy a- around it. Um, but I haven't, we will, we will put a survey out, you know, some point, get some feedback, once we're rolling through a bit, but I haven't heard anything specific.
Okay.
About that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Tom?
Um.
Yeah, please.
Um. Any concerns that, because it sounds like we're trying, we're making the best of it. Frankly, situation probably many districts are dealing with. So do we, I'm assuming, is there alternative if we can ever fill that position? Because, I mean, I'm hearing during in different industries as well, we're probably going to be in this for a number of years. Um, a- at least in my industry, we're seeing students coming out that um and talking some of to our outside orders. They come out with certain degrees like in the accounting realm, they're down about forty percent of bachelor's degrees, and they're down fifty in the masters. And when we used to go and see these um co-op connections and and intern bears. Years ago, what we used to see um a lot of uh foreign students come in, now we're even starting to see it drop off in there, so it seems to me, it's like I don't want to paint, it's all doom and gloom, but I think ultimately, we may have to look at. It sounds like you guys are being creative, but the reality is, and this may be a more permanent solution.
Yeah, and and I I think part of the challenge is certainly that it's part-time. I think this would be, um, while we were, we had two open Spanish positions down in San Keegan, we were able to fill one of them, never filled the other um open Spanish, and both were full-time. Um, but, you know, I I think this being an elementary school and just, you know, such a strong elementary school with such a positive culture and climate, I I think we might be able to attract someone if we move to full-time. But again, we, you you know, it's tough, there's also that balance between classroom instructional time and then, you know, what's that right balance between that? Plus our specials. Um, so uh you know, I I think we certainly could have some room, especially fifth and sixth grade. They uh read sixth grade at A M S, they have more time for Spanish than we do, but we start earlier. Uh, you know, comparing to A M H, so we can certainly look at what does that look like if we were going to offer, you know, or uh, you know, adjust the budget to make a full-time position? It's something for us to look at, depending on, you know, how we um, you know, philosophically, our our thoughts around um the importance of world language, which we've all talked about.
Yeah.
So I think that is something for us to think about and talk about. Um, certainly, I I I think it will still continue, you're right, for a number of years to be difficult to fill, especially if it continues as a part-time.
But I'm happy to hear that you guys are being creative by, and I think you guys are doing an awesome job when it comes to that, so thank you.
Thank you for your support on it. It was a tough reality, but um I I very thankful for the staff's flexibility and creativity and and uh coming up with a solution that works works really well for kids, you know, so.
Yeah, I also think the transparency of the situation, just, you know, saying exactly what's happening here and what the need is and why there's a struggle makes it easier to look at what potential resolution is, and um I appreciate that, so thank you for that. Yeah.
Can I just ask one thing? Um, so I do have a uh co-curricular proposal that was brought to me, it was brought to me late, it was brought to me after the uh submission of the board. Um, the reports for this meeting, so I put on the Trello board for October. With the board's permission, I would like to talk about it tonight. Um, and then we could either table it until the next meeting for approval or potentially move forward with uh acceptance time. So e- either way, I just wanted to let you know, it is in the Trello board for October.
There's a co-curricular proposals card and um one that Tom just received, I think, this week.
Yeah, yeah.
For the mural club. Do you want to talk?
Yeah.
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a mural club proposal. Um, you're gonna probably remember from last year, we had a proposal uh and they ended up painting these columns in the in the library. Uh, they did some pretty cool things. Um, this is uh submitted by Christie, our art teacher. Um, and she with this pictures at the bottom there, you can see some ideas. Um, wants to dress up the uh picnic tables out in the bird garden and um uh and they'll obviously be working on the art room, but they'll also be outside doing doing that. So doing some some artwork out of the really the bird gardens to focus and the tables out.
So the goal would would be to start it soon only because of weather. No, it belongs in paintbrushes and so on. Um, and she is working, um, the second page of it is with Spanish club that she's still working on flushing out. We aren't ready to bring that to you, but certainly we'll wait for the next um one. And um, you know, we told Christie when we spoke to her today, uh if you're not ready for approval of the club, we certainly can adjust the dates um and get approval in October, but um while this was last minute, um we don't like to.
Yeah, I love it.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Yeah, um, so would you like a motion to approve that as a co-curricular?
Yes, because the way the contract reads, the board approves the like um additional enrichment.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Great.
When this is done, can we make sure that we send it to the last two sixth grade classes since it was their gift to the school to have this? Just to make sure that they like see the cool stuff happening. That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I did have a question. I was reading your report, which is awesome. I was curious about this Bridges math program. Um, it sounds like we're doing a lot to try and catch kids up, um so I'd love to hear a little bit more about it.
Yeah, um, so uh Bridges is one of the programs we piloted last year.
Okay.
It's a really strong program, um very tightly aligned to standards and also looks um really from the student experience, um very deep into conceptual understanding. So it's not just skill and drill, um it's really students exploring it. Um, is a constructivist approach, meaning that students are like building and learning um and working both, you know, guided from the teacher as well as um there's something called workplaces where students actually go. It's like almost like a center and they'll go and play a game, but that game really helps to add to their learning. So math becomes a little bit more active um during that time because of those workplaces. And it's amazing, I know in first grade, um first grade was raving about some of the content of the workplaces, how engaging it was for students and how they enjoyed it. Um, and the the teachers are really excited about the program. I know all of the teachers felt strongly that Bridges was the best fit for our students here and felt that um it it gave them the program for how they were already teaching math, which said a lot for how our teachers were previously teaching without a resource, but being able to have that resource, it just really um ensures that tighter alignment to standards. So I feel like implementation, um this year will be fairly seamless. We did pilot units one through four already, so we'll probably have to provide a little bit more support for the second half of this full year, since they didn't experience those units. Um, but as far as um, you know, a a lot of times when you're you implement a new program, the biggest change is is teacher practice. And it's not really a significant change for our teachers because they've done such strong professional development. And Sharmeen has led a lot of that work over the past probably six years or so here, so it it's been an evolution. Um, but the teachers, the feedback we've received, does it teachers feel like they have a program that fits how they already teach? And that they just feel better about their teaching because they have all of that support and backup for, hey, this is tightly aligned to standards. Um, and also, they're not pulling lots of resources and spending time on that. They're spending time, you know, really collaborating with each other and talking about how to teach math when they have a program that has all of the resources. And Bridges is everything you could possibly need, um probably more than you need sometimes. So there's no need for them to be um pulling and supplementing, and they love that. The other incredible feature about Bridges is uh a a part of the day called Number Corner, it's calendar math. And you might remember with Math and Focus, when we purchased Math and Focus, we purchased um Everyday Counts Calendar. This also has a calendar component, and it's twenty minutes a day, which means you have eighty minutes of math because we have sixty minutes of the core program and twenty minutes for Number Corner. So it's a lot of time, but student, it doesn't, it's not always back-to-back. You know, a lot of times we'll pair a calendar with morning meeting, and then, you know, math might be a little bit later. Um, but uh because that the time is broken up also, you know, there's there are workplaces working together collaboratively on something. It doesn't feel like, you know, it's not the teacher standing in front of the class for an hour, certainly. Um, but the calendar math is amazing, kids don't even realize that they're learning that. Um, they're looking at patterns, we're looking at data statistics and probability. About thirty percent of the reasonable standards are actually in Number Corner and in Number Corner alone, which is why it's such a critical component, but it's all your data statistics, geometry, um a lot of measurement. Um, so and and patterning too, it's really deep into Number Corner. So we'll have to have teachers come.
Yeah.
For Number Corner this year to show you and do like a Number Corner, they're amazing.
Yeah, you sound excited about it.
Yeah.
I want to be in Number Corner.
I know.
Can we go? Can we do one?
Well, the teachers, even um down the hill, when some of the teachers felt like, oh, this program doesn't quite, you know, there there was a little um, you know, uh depending on the teacher, sometimes it felt like a really good fit and sometimes, oh, I usually set my math up a little bit differently. All of them loved Number Corner, so everyone, no matter what, felt like Number Corner, they saw the importance. So those are the standards that often get pushed aside, not taught deeply. The geometry unit is usually the last unit, you know, of the year, uh and we don't get to it. And also, um, just the fact that those come up over and over and over again. So you're you're tracking data every single day and you're looking at the data. Um, it's really cool in third grade, and they have it in fourth grade too. Um, they have these Egyptian hieroglyphic um uh symbols on the calendar, and you're going through and you're trying to figure out what the pattern is, and it takes you four or five or six days. So every day it's like, oh, what's going to be the pattern on the card? So it just really builds excitement um around that and makes it realistic because you're you're looking at, you know, whatever it is that you're counting or keeping data on, so that's pretty incredible.
That's awesome. Sounds good.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll definitely.
Around that in here and um and it was a you the unanimous choice uh of of Mont Vernon, and which is really exciting and you know, the energy of the training, we did two days of training. Uh, it was fantastic. It's a commitment, you know, it's robust, there's a lot to it, there's a lot of P D, there's a lot of resources, there's a lot of.
A lot of teacher prep to, like, making the resources and pulling them together, but they.
Yeah, teachers truly were committed to um again, most specific kids, and it really is is an amazing program for kids, so.
They've also been excited excited this year now that they have, you know, they feel like they did the program for half of the year last year, and they went for training. Um, they found that there's Bridges Facebook pages, so teachers across the country, and you have to be a Bridges teacher to join the Facebook page. I'm still waiting to see if they'll let me in. I said, I'm gonna go straight here, but I want to help. So we'll we'll see if I get accepted to the Bridges Facebook page. Um, so uh it's actually by grade level, and they all create, they'll create stuff that's still part of Bridges, but maybe like, hey, I've taken these directions and simplified it for my students, so here they are, and they'll post them for teachers to share. And teachers are so excited to just be part of that online community. It's all free, it's there, and it's just teachers collaborating like across, you know, the country. Cool, that's really, so they're really excited about that piece. That was one of the big things, like, have you joined the Facebook?
Some place up on there, like how to store some of the manipulative.
Oh, I love that.
Amazon link and stuff.
Yeah, because it is a robust program, like there's organization and storage that has to happen in the classroom. You know, where are you going to put your directions for your workplaces? Because kids need to be able to be mobile and grab their kit and go. And um what teachers found most valuable from training this summer is um and the Bridges training, there it it's free. You know, our teachers received their contractual rate to attend, but we didn't have to pay for training because Bridges feels so strongly about training that when you adopt the program, training is is free. Um, and they send teachers, so they're actual teachers who teach Bridges somewhere in the country. Um, and they come to you to do the training, so the teachers loved that, that they were actual teachers doing the training and that they had real suggestions. So it was, yeah, these workplaces can be an organizational nightmare, but I bought these bins and this is how I store these directions, and this is what I have. And that was the biggest thing for teachers, because that was probably the most overwhelming part last year was just how do I organize and how do I prepare and how do I, you know, make this easy for for students to access or uh, you know, and and we did a lot exploring the online resources.
Neat.
So it's been really successful, so we'll make sure, um, you know, I think no matter what this year as teachers present, you know, it's going to be on one of our goals, so, you know, either writing, math, or S E L as teachers um present. So we'll make sure we try to front load this and that.
Excellent.
I love how excited you are about it.
Like, that was a great question.
I'll get.
But we can ask and cable and yes.
I see.
Then bring your angle time out the window.
Yeah.
I see.
That's.
But you love math too.
Do.
If you're so excited about something like that, put a highlight in there and say, please ask me about, because I would have been bombed having not heard that, that was real.
I'm excited for our kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and the performance and growth of our of our students, Shirley and I were just talking today about
Last year.
You know, some of the support, some of that just incredible statistically phenomenal.
That's awesome. And normally, you've seen implementation dip, we did not last year even piloting two different programs, which is really interesting. So we had strong growth last year, um so that, you know, and again, we can see a little bit of a dip. I, you know, that's typically what happens when you implement a new program. I I'd actually be surprised if we see one, but it's possible.
Okay.
Awesome, I'm excited.
Any other great question?
That was mine, that was my favorite.
Phenomenal, which I'd ask that question. Uh, all right, friends, so I believe we already accepted consent agenda items one through six. Um, so I think we are up to our staffing update, which we sort of have, so was there any other?
Just real quick, uh Tom, you still have one paraphernalia open? Um, and so working on that, uh we have a six-hour custodial position, nine position that we're not sure if we'll be able to fill that, we're filling that with contracted service. We met today, there's a, there's a discrepancy in wage, what we offered them, what the current market is.
So what is the wage that we offer?
Um, I I it's a, I talked to Roger today, it's a few dollars below, and especially if they have an opportunity to go to South Egan, which is a higher wage. So we're looking at this, and you'll see something next budget proposal.
Okay.
We are filling the needs through the contracted service.
Okay.
Um, but we do believe that having our own custodial is connected to kids' facilities as best long-term. Um, but it is, it's a very competitive hiring environment, and there's some disparity in our O S E, so he didn't has a little bit different salary schedule on the variety of positions.
Right.
Um, food service, we are fully hired, just not fully there because we've got some leads going. But eventually, when the leaves and the help and all this stuff works out, we are fully hiring food services.
Great.
So that's good, so it's really the custodial position and the pair position, I know Tom's got some leads.
Yeah, so we. I'm hopeful, hopeful by next uh meeting. One name.
What happens if we can't fill a paraphernalia? I mean, there, what do you do?
You can call in a sub, um depending on what the needs are, I think right now. Um, there's a little bit of flexibility to kind of, people are providing some extra coverage that normally they wouldn't or maybe shouldn't even necessarily have to, but they're kind of working amongst themselves.
Some supports doubling up.
So, not ideal, but okay.
Okay, and a standard is best effort, we're making the best effort we can, you know, we can't make something that's there. Because that's continuing the best.
Well, I'm happy to see it's only um one position that's short, because I know that's a big there's a lot of demand for paraprofessionals in the market today in our.
You see why we're doing okay, a couple pairs, keep them on. We're able to, and as George talked, this has been the most extraordinary hiring experience in my thirty-five years of admin.
Or over seventy um new hires across the S A U.
Wow.
We're going to get up to this year, because we just had a resignation, what it was, we're going to get up to seventy-five. We actually added some H R support just to help dig out. You know.
Is this certified staff too, or?
It's both.
Oh.
So it is food service, custodial, um it that's that seventy-five-ish or getting close to seventy-five-ish.
Yeah.
Um, is, you know, across.
Everyone. Wow.
I think we're going to have to at some point have a conversation because the biggest issue here, you're going to have issues attracting people, but you won't need to attract people as long as we're retaining individuals that we want to keep here. And and and, you know, i- in my business, you know, we've had to get creative in that regard. That's something not talk here, but at some point, they have to go into non-public and and discuss some of these things because, like I said, it's going to, and you're seeing it now. Fortunately for us, we were kind of the tail on the dog, we saw other industries experiencing it before we did. Just because, you know, we do have a rich benefit package and most people, you know. I've had people retire in forty-five years. With us.
Yeah.
There's something to that, but even with that, now with the retirements, we're having trouble bringing people in. So, we're very sensitive about keeping the people that we want to keep here. So, we're having to think outside of the box. So, that's just something I think at some point we're gonna have to discuss because. I, we have to get out ahead of this. I mean, and we're already, it doesn't seem like we're. Seems like we're probably behind and there's not much we can do, but believe me, you could get a lot worse.
There's infrastructure. Christine has developed a very strong mentor program, which helped retain. We cobble together. One of these positions is a point position, S A U Y. I think that kept one of our people here willing to do, you know, point eight here. And point two there. So, that is a nice leverage of our relationships in S A U. But you're a hundred percent right. We're gonna have to. We're, we're actually offering additional supports for some of our newer teachers in the profession because we want, we have, we want to keep them in the profession. As you hear, a lot of people are leaving. So, we do have to retain, we have to support, but then also, you know, there's going to be compensation, things like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's. We're even doing like some bonuses for people that. They weren't even expecting it, but you know, and I would imagine everyone in sheet there. I know it's the beginning of the year, but they've been burnt out for the last couple of years and they're all, and I'm glad to hear they're very enthusiastic and want to.
Yeah.
But eventually that shine's gonna wear off a little bit and. They've had these reserves that have been kind of whittled down internally and at some point those reserves just aren't there anymore and that. At that point, they're making life decisions.
That, that is a key factor, even higher some ratings than compensation. There's some things that in this S A U that are very attractive. The teachers focus on instruction. There's not a lot. Duty pieces, you know, there's really, it's a neat place, but it is the whole package and ultimately do they feel cared for? And I believe the teachers, especially in this community, this place, feel very cared for by the chief of professors, my right, in this board. Board was able to make some decisions that in a competitive environment, when other people had other opportunities because of the nimbleness and your ability. We kept a high quality education here in front of our kids. That is a testament to you all, to these students, my right, right? To act as quickly as we can to do what we need for kids. And that alone, it's not everybody, that alone separately gets you to the one percent. But that's what's going to take now. We have this hiring. We were hiring like. You know, we will and still are in some of our sub areas, like we were trying to move to very quickly because the competitive market. Because we had to make an offer very quickly because some of those are two or three markets, you know, offers. The first time in my career. That, I think we said, I could have got, I'm pretty experienced, pretty old. I could have got a math job. Five years ago, normally interviewing for math job because I'm top top salary schedule. This is the first time in my career that I've got a math job. Anybody, they're hiring top top, every district.
Wow.
And that's never happened. When I was, you know, I mean, some districts hired the best candidate, but others have a certain budget. But not now. Because of the teacher shortage and so, and we saw that we had some people move out of positions because you can move closer home. You know, and not because they like.
From some of that, which is.
But this is not an indictment unless you're not upon burning or am, just like, it's not.
Yeah.
People aren't leaving here, running away because of what happens. It's other opportunities.
It's station like the last, and it wasn't even the same thing. The last time, I remember something like this was in the late nineties, remember Y two K? And everyone was fearful, all their computers were going to shut down because they didn't write the proper coding to pick up. Oh, now there's going to be a two instead of a nineteen ninety-nine, but even that was more centered around the I T. Area. This is across all industries. I've never seen anything like this before.
I mean, I, I, twenty-nine, I've never, ever seen. Anything like this. I will say. Montburn, you know, the class sizes here, the ratios.
Yeah.
You know, there's a whole lot of moving parts, right?
Yeah.
To, to culture, climate retention, as you said. But it's, it's, it does go a long way. It does, it does go a long way. And I know the staff here does feel the support. From the board, from the community. That does, that does go a long way, you know?
The last piece I'll leave you with, and again, I look at this stuff all the time. I don't really focus on unemployment. I focus on total employment. Because really that's. Unemployment is a subset of, you know, the available workforce. If you look at the last couple of years, that number's been steadily declining. So, even though, that's why I'm saying, this is not something that's going to have to be addressed next year. Or the year after. This is going to be something for the next, I would say, five, six, seven years. It's gonna be a while.
Absolutely.
It's gonna be a while. You just don't have enough people in the labor workforce and you're just. All the other things you throw in. Thank you.
Thanks for the update then. Open discussion, I think it's important. We are up to our board goals, finalizing our board goals and voting on them. Last month, we held off on. Voting on them because we were missing you and tonight we are missing two others, but maybe we can kind of hodgepodge together this evening. And, and take a vote on that, just so we kind of put it on the books. I think we were ready to do that last month and. Sorry, no, it's totally okay.
And it is on the Trello board under organizational board. There is a card for school goals, or work goals that are.
Great. It's in the packet too. Yeah, we've got it here as well. So, was there anything that, that you saw that you think needs to be revised? I think it's, I think we've got everything captured that we've talked about in the last couple of, of meetings there.
I think it, I think they're great. Yeah, I'm happy about the community engagement. I'm, all the other stuff is great, obviously for our schools, but I think the community engagement part is. One that all of our boards. Could do better on. And I think this is great.
I did have one quick question though, on the social and emotional learning. I'm not familiar with the second step program.
Yeah, that's the program that our school counselor uses during her guidance lessons, when she actually pushes in once a week to every classroom. And provides a little lesson. They start on like emotions and talking about what an emotion is and, and looking at different faces. And what is, you know, what, what, how is this person feeling and looking at this face? And, you know, we also actually have an anti-bullying curriculum. That ties in with second step as well. So, it is our, our core resource for our guidance lessons that help. Our school counselor to deliver just that social emotional learning piece.
It is evidence of research.
Yeah, it's a strong program.
And that would also make for a great presentation.
That would be great. Yeah.
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 You all look good.
Great. The one thing that I just wanted to comment on that, that struck me as I reread them is that really proud that our goals are integrated with. The staff and like, it feels like it's an integrated goal. So, when it says board goals, I just, it just makes me feel good about it because. You know, you were talking about the fact that people feel supported here. I think we feel supported by the staff as well and having a, having a, a rich connection. So, it just stood out to me and I. Felt the need to say that right then. So, thanks. So, I would accept a motion to, to adopt our board goals for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you so much. All in favor? Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, we are up to our policies first reading, the ones from our spring review. These are the ones that we went over at the S A U board meeting. Last week, so we have B C E K, B E C, B E D G, B G A A, D A F. J L C, J A, B E D H, I H B A A, J I C C, E B C G, E E A E A. And J I C D. I know. Today's letter is.
So, you said these a lot over the summer, so many times.
Yeah. So, do we have any discussion on these policies? You know, we were all, we were all on board with them at the S A U board meeting. Nothing has changed since then. And George, I mean, Jess and I have been, we did a deep dive into these in the summer. So, do you have any questions that we'd be happy to? Okay.
I won't put you through that.
Okay. So.
Spend a lot of time on.
So, we then need, well. We have an option, so we tend to put these in place after our first reading. We tend to use the S A U board meeting as our first reading and this is our second reading. So, I would be open to a motion to adopt those policies that I just read off that are in the list and today I'm happy to, they're right there. But if you feel comfortable, if not, we can hold and, and count this as our first reading and use next month as our second reading.
I'm comfortable adopting. I am this.
I, I'm comfortable. I was not at the S A U meeting and I thought I did read through these and I didn't have any issues. So.
Okay.
If you guys are.
Peter and Kristen were at the S A U board meeting, so I feel comfortable that there were no objections at that time. You're okay with that. Okay. So, can I have a motion to adopt the policies that I read off a moment ago?
I will make that motion.
What were those?
Great, thank you. We have a few policies for consideration to be rescinded. Those are E B C A. E E A E A dash R, the emergency policies for personal protective measures policy and policy G C C.
And G B G, do you say G B G A A?
Did not say that one. It's not.
That one's in the pack.
It was one in the pack, but not on the agenda.
Oh.
Yeah. And it's highlighted differently than the others.
So.
Oh, it's because we're waiting, while we did just adopt E B C G, so this one was waiting. To be adopted until, or to be rescinded until the other was adopted, just did, so we could rescind that too.
Yes, you're right.
Can you read all of them for me? So, I have them for Abby including the one we are still gonna.
I can. So, we have E B C A. E E A E A dash R, the emergencies policy.
Yeah.
G C C and.
G B G A A.
I have the other ones. And George, did you have any questions on those?
No, no, I'm all set. Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to rescind that list. Thank you so much.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. So, any discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote on rescinding those all in favor. Great, thank you. Okay, we are up to our public input time two of two and we do not have any members of the public present. So, we will move past that. I do believe we have a non-public session, so that is, sorry, I've got to go back to my little cheat sheet here. So, we need a motion to enter non-public under RSA ninety-one, A three, two, C. I think your notes were some.
Cheat sheet. I'll make a motion to move into non-public.
No, I will second.
Okay, so I think we need a roll call. Vote for that.
George.
Thankfully, yes. Lawrence, yes. So, we will be entering non-public at six forty-five.
So, I'm gonna stop the recording.